Ah, not recording, I see.
It is now, shoot.
Perfect. Okay, well, at least we're starting with something very important here, right? So.
Yeah, well, there we go. I'll go back and do a rundown before we move on to the next item, so.
Sounds good. All right, well, thank you for allowing me to do this virtual week today. I don't know if Janelle passed along the news, but I had COVID last week and I'm still testing positive, so I just figured it wouldn't be a good idea for me to be onsite. But anyway, we have this option and it'll work out well. So as in the past, I've got a PowerPoint presentation here to kind of walk through the high level results of the audit. So just like last year, I'm gonna do that and then we'll also be, well, actually, we already sent over the full finalized PDFs of the audit. So for starters, gonna start out by kind of talking about the audit process just from a really high level and a reminder of what exactly it is we do during an audit each year. So an audit consists of us obtaining your financial records and supporting information from throughout the past year. And we perform a number of procedures over this information. Specifically, we're focused more on the transactions and the numbers that are in your accounting system because that individual data, those individual transactions, that's what makes up the numbers that are in your full audited financial statements. So we do numerous procedures over this, kind of like what's laid out on the screen here, but it's very heavily geared towards detailed testing. So looking at supporting invoices, looking at reports from the county, from the state, related to the revenues you received, and then where did that money go, you know, what did you use for expenses and all the underlying documentation for that? And based on all of those procedures, we're able to then express an opinion on whether we feel your financial statements are accurate. And the opinion that we've given this year is what's called an unmodified opinion. So that is a clean opinion and that's what you're looking for. The next slide here goes over just kind of the other required communications. So we did have that clean opinion for you, but how did the audit go? You know, did we see any unusual transactions or did we see anything as far as accounting procedures that we thought was strange or have any difficulty getting the information we needed? You know, if we had any issues like that, this is where we would tell you about it. And as you can see, we didn't have anything along those lines. Everything went very smoothly and the district did a nice job preparing for us and getting ready for the audit. A couple estimates in the audit I always like to point out. If you're going through the large financial reports and you see anything related to the net pension liability or the OPEB post-employment benefits liability, those amounts have a lot of actuarial inputs that go into them, a lot of long-term estimates. So they can really jump around from year to year. And then, in fact, even that balance that shows how much is due to the school at the end of the year from the state of Minnesota, even that's a bit of a moving target where it can keep fluctuating throughout the following year, throughout FY23, until those final payments are made. As part of the audit, we also look at your internal controls and some of those processes and procedures that are behind the numbers. And oftentimes, we have three internal control items to report here. That's kind of the standard three that we report on most of the districts that we work with. Now, one of these this year for you actually dropped off. We didn't have a finding this year related to audit adjustments, but I wanted to keep it on here just to basically mention it and point out the fact that we didn't have a finding this year for audit adjustments. So that means that the numbers that we were provided for the audit were very clean and we really didn't have to make much for changes for them to get them to what they are in the audit. So that's good news. The other two here are extremely common. This one in particular, lack of segregation duties. Just based on the size of your district and the number of people that are involved with the accounting processes, you're not really able to fully segregate those accounting functions to the extent that's considered ideal. So we have to have this in here to basically let the readers be aware of that. Then financial statement preparation. This is just because we as a third party do prepare your financial statements. And whenever there's somebody outside of the school district who's performing that function, there's theoretically a heightened risk of a potential disclosure being missed or something along those lines whenever there's a third party involved with that process. Excuse me. As part of the audit, we also have to review your compliance with Minnesota statutes. So the state gives us checklists related to each one of these different categories listed out here that basically go through all the corresponding statutes and have us look into, you know, how did you go about contracting and bidding? Did you solicit bids properly? Where are you keeping your cash and investments? Are they inappropriate types of deposits? You know, so on and so forth. Based on this review this year, we didn't come across anything that was an issue. We didn't see any areas of non-compliance. And then finally here, before we get into the numbers, we also have to do what's called a single audit each year. So this is kind of like an extra little compliance audit that gets completed in conjunction with your typical financial statement audit. So this is geared directly towards federal programs. So you receive federal funding through various programs during the year. And we have to do a bit of a risk assessment here and select what programs we're gonna focus our testing on. And this year, the two programs that we had to select were the Child Nutrition Cluster. So that's your food service program. And then also the Education Stabilization Fund. So this is like those ESER and GIR dollars that came through in response to COVID. So based on our review this year, we had a clean opinion again as far as what you reported for these expenditures. And then we also had clean opinions and no findings related to compliance and internal controls. So across the board, very clean from that standpoint as well. All right, with that, we'll start getting into some numbers here. And we always like to start out by looking at your enrollment. So here we have a trend of that over the last five years, 2018 through 2022. You can see from 2021 to 2022, you actually did have a slight increase. You're up about 12 students from that of the prior year. And overall, for the year, your enrollment was at 970. Next page here, start looking at your funds. This is the general fund, which is where the vast majority of the district's activity falls into. Once again, we have a trend analysis here and we're starting out just really high level, big picture for now. We have revenues here in the blue for each year, expenditures in the red, and then your fund balance at the end of each year in the green. And then we also put that 2022 budget on the right-hand side. Really big picture, revenues did come in under budget by about $620,000. And expenditures also came under budget by about $645,000. And both those variances, as you'll see in the next couple pages here, they're kind of interrelated. They're related to the timing of when you're recognizing some federal funding and basically making use of that COVID-related entitlement. But we'll see that in the next couple pages here. Overall, you did budget for an increase in your fund balance of about $46,000. Your actual increase in fund balance for the year was about $79,000.
You have four questions to the end.
Ryan, what would you prefer?
Go ahead, anytime.
So that's 625, that's a reduction of the budget, the expenses and the revenue. So we have a budget set for this year. Will that have any effect on that?
No, not necessarily.
Talking about the federal funds, I like, is that extra that's gonna kind of go away? So we won't deal with that again?
You know, actually, I think I'm gonna be addressing that coming up in my next slide here.
Then I'll wait.
So let's hop right into that. So the next slide here, we've got the same exact revenues from the previous slide, but now we have it broken down into numerous different categories here. So to jump right to those federal revenues towards the right-hand side here, you can see this is what's driving the biggest difference of why you came in under budget on the revenue side. And the corresponding expenses, you'll see that on the next slide here too. But basically, my understanding of what happened here is that you have a certain amount of entitlement that you've been given under the Education Stabilization Fund program, which is those ESER and GIR dollars and there's some other components there. But basically, you have more than one year to spend those dollars. I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe is, if it's two or three years or something along those lines. But I think just less of those funds were spent in this FY22 year than what was budgeted. So you still have them available to you to have those expenses now in FY23 and, you know, until the award period is over. But that's what's driving our biggest difference here is I think that just less was spent than what was anticipated. So hopefully that.
I would agree with that.
Other items on this slide. You know, the other items here were actually each a little bit under budget, I believe. Or no, actually, these were each over budget, I'm sorry. So on a net basis, that's how you get to that $600,000 difference is that you were actually under budget on your federal revenues by about 1.1 million. And then each of these were pretty close, but a little bit over budget with the majority of your funding, of course, coming from state sources. Same layout here on the next page, but now focusing on the expenditure side of things and breaking it down into numerous different categories here. You know, the biggest difference right off the bat that we see here is for the capital outlay category. And this is where the use of those ESER funds was budgeted, those federal dollars. And I believe you had some budgeted items in here related to your HVAC improvements that didn't occur yet. And so like we talked about on the previous page, that's just a timing issue right there. As far as the other categories that we see here, not too many significant differences. A little bit over on regular instruction, about $200,000 over. Same with pupil support services over a little bit, about $181,000. But pretty close across the board on the rest of the categories. Okay, so the next page that we have here focuses on your fund balance then at the end of each year. So this is just at a point in time at the end of each year, this is what your fund balance was, the general fund. And we have it kind of showing the allocation here of how much of that fund balance is unassigned, meaning it's available for anything that it's needed for versus the assigned portion in the green, restricted portion in the red, and then non-spendable, which would be things like inventory and prepaid and things that just aren't in a spendable form. But anyway, overall, you can see you did have an increase, like we talked about a couple pages ago, of about $79,000 overall. But there was also a bit of a shift in the classifications here. So your restricted portion, the red, that did increase about $224,000 from the previous year. And most of that change came out of the unassigned portion. So you have a little bit more of your fund balance at the end of the year that's restricted versus what you had last year and the year before. And a good chunk of that restriction is made up of dollars that are set aside for long-term facilities maintenance aid. So that kind of explains what you're seeing on the next slide that we get into here. So the next slide here shows your unassigned portion of your fund balance as a percentage of your annual budget. And you actually have a policy in place to have a minimum here of around 12.5%. Now, you did have an increase in your fund balance overall this year, but because of that shift in classification, you had a little bit more restricted at the end of the year. And then also, because your overall expenses just went up, you know, that also has an impact on how this ratio gets calculated. That's what's causing the decrease that you have here. So 2021, you were at about 14.7%. And 2022, you're at about 12% at the end of the year. And then this is just the cash, cash balance for the general fund over the past several years, somewhat reflective of what you see in the fund balance in the previous page. At about $4 million in cash at the end of FY22. All right. With that, we'll get into just a real quick look on each one of your other funds here, starting out with your debt service and building construction fund. Debt service fund, very typical activity here. You have your revenues from taxes and state aids coming in, expenditures for debt principal and interest payments. And you typically get pretty close to breaking even in that fund each year. Building construction fund, on the other hand, a bit more activity there this year. You did have your new bond issuance from 2022. And that's the other sources that you see here or the green item on the graph. And then you did have fairly significant expenditures here for the indoor air quality project as well as wrapping up your facilities remodeling project that you're going on. So overall, in that fund, you had a decrease in your fund balance as you spent down those bond proceeds of about $1 million. Next page here shows the trend of cash in both of those funds over the past few years. As expected, debt service holds pretty steady. At about $803,000 in that fund at the end of the year. And building construction fund, you know, you had your really large issuance back in 2020. And then since then, you've been spending down those dollars with the project costs. Remaining two funds here, we have your food service fund and community service fund. With being back onsite in FY22, both of these had a bit of increased activity compared to the previous year. Food service was up pretty significantly, actually. Revenues in the food service fund were up about $257,000 from the prior year. Expenses were also up about $156,000. So with that greater increase in revenues, you had a nice positive increase in your fund balance here this year of about $146,000. Ended the year with a fund balance of about $394,000. Community service, kind of a similar story. Revenues and expenses were both up by fairly even amounts. Up $130,000 for revenues and $145,000 up for expenses. Overall, with that activity, you had an increase in your fund balance here of about $85,000. And then once again, the cash trend over the past five years for both of these funds. You can see over the past two years, some pretty substantial increases for both the food service and community service fund. So that covers each one of the district's individual funds. I now have a few slides in here real quick just to look at everything on an aggregate basis. So this is wrapping all of those funds together and putting in items like capital assets. And, you know, so you're building your facilities, long-term debt on the next page, getting all of those long-term, non-current items factored in. So you can see on an aggregate basis here, the overall assets of the district have been increasing. They increased from 2021 to 2022. Most of this was an increase in capital assets as you've been kind of converting those cash, short-term assets into your facilities and improvements. But on an aggregate level, you had an increase of about $852,000 here in assets. Liabilities on the next page, same layout here. Also an increase in your overall liabilities this past year. If we exclude the pension liability, which will pretend this green isn't here for a minute. So looking at it without that pension liability, you did have that additional debt issuance in 2022. So that did increase your overall long-term debt. Current assets, or I'm sorry, current liabilities staying pretty similar to the previous year. The green item here, this is, of course, that net pension liability that relates to TRA and PERA. Essentially, the state's proportionate share or your proportionate share of the state's overall liability under these pension plans. So that number, there isn't much you can do about it. It jumps around a bit from year to year based on their actuarial calculations.
If I can ask another question, but that's our total liability, right? So in essence, our risk of that liability has gone down in the last five years. It was at 19,000. And that went to, or 19, 19 million, and now we're down to five?
Five million was in 2018. So that was, I think you've got it backwards here. We started out in 2018 around 5 million. Then in 2020, you had the large debt issuance for your facility improvements. So you jumped up to about just under 20 million.
I was just on liabilities, but pension liability.
Oh, the pension liability, the pension liability, yes. Okay, okay, yes. The pension liability, so that standard first came out, I don't know, maybe it's been six or seven years ago where we had to start putting these numbers on the books for you. And in the beginning, they kept changing their estimates. You know, they have this thing called the discount rate, which kind of projects how their investments are gonna do going forward because they have all these investments, so they have their assets that they then net against what they project for all the future benefit payments. And then they come up with this net pension liability. And at the time, they had projected a much larger liability for the statewide plan. So then everybody's proportionate share was much larger as well. Well, then they, a few things happened. They revised their estimates. The market started doing better. So, you know, then they revised their estimates for that as well, saying, well, our investments are gonna do a little bit better. And then also, I believe, the state started making annual contributions to the plan and that factored in as well. So if they're assuming that the state's gonna keep making annual contributions, then that reduces that projected liability as well. So there's just so many factors that play into this. And I mean, at the district level, you just have no control over this number. So it can look a little strange when you look at it from year to year, for sure. Which is a good segue into the next slide here where I completely drop off that pension liability and basically just look at those assets and liabilities comparatively here, excluding all of that pension stuff, just so you can get a look at things, your big picture, without the pensions included. And then this green line is the net of the two. It's your assets minus your liabilities here. So it's, you can see it's held pretty steady over the past several years with maybe just a slight increase here on a net basis in 2022. And then the next slide here shows the overall long-term debt, which I just kind of walked through this a little bit when I thought I was answering your question the first time. But you've got the debt issuance here, the significant one in 2020, and then another slight issuance here, smaller issuance in 2022, bringing you up to about 18.3 for overall outstanding debt at the end of the year. All right, and I did put one extra slide in here this year to talk about a new accounting standard that's coming out this next year. So it's actually in effect for the FY23 fiscal year already. And, you know, last year, when I did this, I think I probably talked about the new leasing standard a little bit, which ended up not having a very significant impact on the district because you don't have many leases that you've entered into. But this is similar to that where the idea is that for any subscription-based arrangements that you have, which are generally like software subscriptions or potentially curriculum-type subscriptions, we're gonna have to take a look at those contracts. And let's say it's a five-year arrangement and, you know, you're making annual payments over the next five years. Under this new standard, they want us to basically calculate the present value of those future required payments under the contract and put a liability, a subscription liability on the books for that to represent those future payments that you're contractually obligated for. And then you offset that with an asset of some sort that you also put on the books. So the net impact, probably not very significant, but it grosses up your assets and liabilities a bit to theoretically give a better picture of what your future liabilities are, I suppose. So something to be aware of there for next year.
Does that have anything to do with lease-to-buy?
Um, you know, the lease-to-buy arrangements, you know, those have always been kind of just accounted for as debt. Because basically, in the end, you're gonna be acquiring that asset. So we kind of treated, we've always treated that as debt. But in the past, leasing arrangements and arrangements like the one I just talked about here, basically, if you're not acquiring the asset for, you know, permanently, then it would be something where, well, as you make the payments, you just record an expense every time you make a payment. And it was a lot simpler, you know, you make a payment, you record an expense, you move on. But it's become a little more complicated now with this standard and then the leasing standard from last year, where basically regardless of whether or not you get to keep that asset at the end of the arrangement, you still have to record a liability for the present value of those future payments that you're contractually obligated for. Any other questions?
In page inch. With that, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year 22 audit report prepared by Senator Winter and company.
So move.
Got a motion from Bruce. Second from Rick, any further discussion?
Yeah, thank you. I actually was very proud as a board member of this audit report. You had no discrepancies or probably discrepancies, but nothing showed up in any of the columns that we had something that wasn't right at all. I think it was a very good job.
Thank you, Kerry. And I'll just acknowledge that's a lot of work from our business office. Amanda and Kerry do a lot of hard work to reconcile bills and make sure that payments are made. And there's just a lot of work that's done within the business office. So thank you to Anna Miranda with all the, I mean, that's a great team. So thank you, team, for that good hard work, so.
Absolutely. All right, well, thank you, thank you.
Would then all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both say no? It's Kerry.
Okay, before we can go, before we go on, I just wanna pause and say and apologize. I did not start the recording at the beginning. So if I can just go back and real quickly, just kind of recap what we talked about at the beginning. And there were no additions to the agenda when we walked through the consent agenda. I do wanna add, just to reiterate that there was a really heartfelt appreciation for Matt Dickhausen and his resignation and the opportunity that he has to serve the state organization for, as the executive director for education directors. So I just wanna pause there and kind of reiterate that. Cheryl did go through the bills before those were approved. And then I acknowledged the donation, an anonymous $500 donation that was received at the elementary school. So before we move on, I wanna add those items in. Just to review, the revenue and expenditure spreadsheets have been updated. The reason those weren't there prior was because of the short timeframe between the November, the last business meeting in November and this being the early, mid-December board meeting. So those are updated now. The biggest change is there is, as we just reviewed the audit, you can see that the first columns are reflective of the audited numbers of both revenues and expenditures. So again, I apologize, I didn't catch that until I turned it over to our auditor for the presentation. So with that, Thomas, I'll send it back to you.
Great job, the recap. So we're gonna see 2021, 2022, final fund balance after audit action.
Okay, so I'm going to pull this up and share as well. So every year, this is a very familiar spreadsheet that we.
Be right in the middle of it.
That one?
Nope.
That one, there we go, thank you. So these numbers are reflective of, this is the consistent spreadsheet that we've just used year over year. And I've added the revenue expenditure spreadsheet for more detailed information. But this is the document that you're familiar with seeing. And it has been updated to reflect the audited numbers that were finalized by our auditor as presented in the previous agenda items. So. So um I'll pause for any questions and Carrie can add any detail to that. But uh these are all reflective of the audited information.
That will look for a motion to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty two uh updated budget after audit. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yeah, second from Bruce. Any further discussions, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both say no? Carrie.
Okay.
And world best workforce report.
All right, uh so this um this report, um I will pull that up and and share that with you. So uh the world's best workforce, just as a reminder of what it is, is um this is a required report that we um present to the sort of Department of Education. They set parameters of the certain areas that we have to report. And um it really is intended to kind of guide as a strategic plan of this is what your district should be focusing on. All districts within the state of Minnesota should be focusing on these items. Um, our strategic plan has aligned with this as well. And so as we click through, you're going to see here and see some familiar things. Um, but this report um is kind of redundant, we do it annually and we talk about it. Um, so I just want to um update kind of what those, the expectations are. Uh, one of the requirements of the report is to report on our equitable access to effective and diverse teachers. You will see that seven of our seventy four FTEs have three or fewer years of experience, um which means that we have very veteran staff across the um Paines Valerius schools. We do have a mentorship program for our new staff, uh we also have professional learning communities, um which are part of our um certified staff. So there is an opportunity to make sure that our teachers are um using effective practices. And um we're maintaining a uh and attempting to maintain a diverse population. You will see that our student population has an eight point six percent ethnic ethnically diverse um ratio or rating. Um, our staff does not reflect that despite our attempts to hire um posting in in various locations. Um, so you know, that's that's an area where we continue to try to um provide opportunity. And as I get toward the end of the report, you're going to see one of the things that we do do to work on that as well. Um, one of the areas that we, or these are the areas that we really take a look at. Um, all kids are ready for school, so that's working on our our preschool, school readiness information. Third graders can read at grade level, achievement gaps are closed between our identified groups, whether it be our free and reduced pop student population, our students with disabilities, um or English language learners, so we're really working on closing gaps between our um all of our student body population. All of our kids are ready for career in college and all of our students graduate from high school, those are the focus areas, okay? So the preschool, so you will see that these are are, we have not pulled in anything new over the course of the last year. Um, I would say one of the things that's become more prominent is that we have now resumed our practices where um COVID kind of put us to a halt and some of our screenings and opportunities like that for our families coming in. Um, it was much more difficult and those have resumed. Uh, you will see that we really use our census data to reach out to our families that um have students that are kindergarten ready and ready to um be coming in, uh so we're we're inviting them in to round up to know whether or not they're ready to be um sending their kiddos as kindergartners or not. Um, we are looking at um making sure that all of our students are screened before they come to school. Uh, that really is targeting early intervention. We know from research that the sooner you intervene when a student is struggling, the um the better results we have. So we're working really hard to make sure that those screening, um that screening is taking place. Um, um, our preschool programs for three year olds and four year olds have been very successful. Um, and it really is um making sure again that those kids have opportunities to attend school based experiences prior to coming to kindergarten. So that's one of those um the things that we do to keep uh make sure that all children are ready for school. All third graders reading at grade level, so this is an area where we've talked a lot about the discrepancy between MCA testing and our FAST data. So FAST is our FAST bridges is a um a screening tool that we do three times a year. And what that does is that provides us an opportunity to see if a student is responding, they're growing, they are performing at grade level multiple times instead of just a one-shot MCA test data. We've talked about as a as a district, how um and and as a world of world's best workforce team, how we really need to be incorporating information that is at our fingertips to use and respond to throughout the course of the year, not just one time. And so we have now started pulling in FAST bridge data. We do need to have three years, um and at the end of this year, we will have that three years of data. So you will see a shift in our um the way that we report our grade three scores. You will see, and I will acknowledge, our grade three scores are not great um from the MCA data. Um, there are a number of reasons for that, some of the things that we have talked about and understand and know is that um that is a one day, one day experience for a student. Um, they walk in, they're taking the MCA and that's what they know. Um, that I don't believe that's an accurate reflection of all of our students' learning. Um, one of the reasons why we as a district have talked about administratively and from our teacher leadership group using um that FAST bridge data, which is a much more accurate reflection. And and now we'll be able to start incorporating that into our world's best workforce plan. Um, the other thing that you will notice um is that um we, our state has allowed parents to opt out of the MCA assessment um for various reasons. Some families don't believe, they don't feel that um testing is appropriate for their children. And and so that's an option that they have to um not have their students participate in the MCAs, uh which is also it, when a student doesn't participate, they show as not proficient in our data. So it's it's something that's difficult for us to account for.
Every school has the same issue.
Every, all, all schools have the same issues, yes.
Cause the MCA, last I looked at that, um we reported just independently. But the MCA numbers are statewide and everybody had similar issues at similar levels.
There's
Is that reading that right or?
You you are, there's, as a state, our our testing proficiency is down, for sure. Yep, our MCA data as a state is lower. So um couple of things to to know, just to proactively, we are looking at is is our our English language arts teachers, um if people have been paying attention to board meetings and as a board, you've talked a lot and you've given a lot of um emphasis to the letters training for our English language arts teachers. That is a very uh robust um research-based process to teach reading. And that is one of those areas that will absolutely help because it's been not only our elementary students, but our English language arts at that sixth, seventh and eighth grade level as well. So that they can uh really fundamentally look at the science of reading and how um students can are responding to interventions. So um those are some things that we do have in place um that we are hopeful continues to improve this area for our students.
It all should change better because we don't have a COVID year anymore. Take those kids out of school, lots of the reports are saying that was not mainly the best thing.
That was hard for kids, absolutely.
And so we have your third grade, so we have a couple of years
Yep.
Till we get back to the kids having what kids in two thousand eighteen had.
Right, yeah.
Uh, and those proficiency ratings, there's so many other factors, that's just a number, there's so many other factors that you have to look at. Classes, the numbers in each class.
Yep.
There are just so many other things, you just can't look at a number and say.
Yeah, and one of the things that I think um our our teams are starting to do and and I would say administratively, we're we're looking at um trend data and how classes are progressing year over year using um not just one data point, right? So if we can, um and we, I would say we know that um students um, your fall scores are going to be different than your spring scores, you're going to have some gap over summer, you know? Taking and and to your point, Rick, taking all of those pieces into consideration. Um, but knowing that, it it is, um I do think that is an area where we continue can continue to do some work as a district, is how are we looking at the way our students are responding to instruction? And then what do we do as a result of the information that we have at our fingertips?
I just think it's fast, I mean, obviously, reading at a grade level means reading English at grade level, there might be some classes that can read another language at a we just have to incorporate that and that's part of the process.
Yep, and and that's a, you know, we don't have a huge population of um of EL learners um that are but it it certainly does, it absolutely impacts for sure, yep. Um, so the achievement gap, closing those achievement gap, you will see um the so just to kind of identify the FRP is the free and reduced um reading. The non-free and reduced would be your obviously non-free reduced, and then you have free and reduced math and your non-free and reduced. Um, so again, this is a ge- all using the MCA data again, so it's it's as good as that data set is. But I, um, this is also another area that we will be able to incorporate, um, yes, we are still here. Um, but we will be able to incorporate uh the analysis within that FAST data as well. Again, so making sure that we're looking at how our students are responding. Um, one of the areas that's within here as well. Um, oh, I'm going to go back, I was thinking it was on there. So one of the areas that's in there as well, um are our students with special needs. Um, so as a student is identified uh with um with special education services, um if they are um taking, if there's only a a set population that can take uh what's called the MTAS, which is an alternate form of the um of the MCA. Um, but it's a very, very prescriptive task. And so when you have uh students that maybe have a significant learning disability in reading, for example, um they still are are held to the same accountability standards as on the MCAs as um a student without a learning disability. So they, it really is, again, kind of, Rick, coming back to your point of taking a look at how are we looking at all areas of growth and opportunity?
Because according to this, we're very successful at closing the gap.
Well.
I mean, if you look at the statistics.
From the thirty two, well, from thirty point six, thirty two for reading and twenty two to twenty six for math, so. Um.
Well, the gap went in twenty eighteen for reading, it went from nineteen
Fifty one.
Percent difference to nine.
Fifty one to seventy, well, and then our non Our our non-free and reduced population is lower scores for sure. So again, you know, I think the, again, knowing that this isn't, um I would say, over the course of years, the emphasis and the importance that's been put on MCA testing has shifted and evolved. Um, I would say it's shifted and evolved across our surrounding communities as well. Um, so it really is helping to, I guess, in my mind, having information that is pertinent and more useful, um I think we have a better indicator of who we are as as a district. Um, I'll be honest with you, I I really worry, the the piece I worry the most about in in this information data set is that this is what feeds into our report card as a school district at the state level. When you go to the Minnesota Department of Education website, this is what is, what what pulls in. Um, and I I in, I don't believe this is an accurate reflection of our students. But I, this is what we have to, what our current plan reports. Now, again, I've talked about what we're going to shift to and that will be a better indicator. Um, but this, I still won't go on our report card, which is unfortunate, but.
At one time, I, the MCA was the only thing that I, as a board member, had to find out what was going on in school. We didn't have anything else.
No.
We didn't have a class bridge, we didn't have anything else, we had no idea what was going on till later, the report came out. Well, it's changed a lot since then.
Yeah.
And then with COVID, these numbers are so, so far removed, we almost need to start over in twenty twenty one and move forward. And kind of maybe forget what happened in the past because it's going to take forever for some of this to average.
Well, and I think that um using a different set of data now that we have have had it for the course of three years is going to be beneficial. And now we'll continue to track that. Um, but I, you know, and and we do know that there were some significant impacts in our, on our students because of their lack of instruction, because of their opportunity, their lack of opportunity to engage. And and that is going to change some, some, uh that will be some work for us to continue to do, which is why there was so much money from the federal government to push into schools to really target that, um, how we're responding to that need, so. Um, next area is all students are are ready for career in college, so again, this is taking a look at our our juniors. Um, our eleventh grade MCA scores and the ACT. Um, this is um a difficult number for us, there's a couple of factors in here. Again, um many of our students that opted out, um they would have been proficient students, but because they did not um complete the assessment, they show as a not proficient. And the other thing is uh ACTs are no longer a requirement for many college course, uh college entrance opportunities. So the um, there's not a lot of students that are taking the ACTs anymore. And so that's, those are, those are a couple of things that come into factors as we look at why are, why is our data down? Why is our number, why are our numbers low? Um, because we have fewer participants, uh which, and and again, I don't believe that's an accurate represent representation. But then I can say that all I want to, but the the bottom line is, is how do we know that our students are prepared and that our students are ready? So we do use things like um the Minnesota Career Inventor Information System, taking a look at how are our students doing in our college classes that we're offering? How are our students doing um if we follow them through the the statewide longitudinal educational data, data system, the SLED system? So there's ways that we can, other methods that I think are important for us as a school district to make sure that we we can't just look at a set of data and say it's dirty and do nothing, that's not, that's not responsible. It is, we still have to take a look at what other bits of information do we have that tell us our students are are able to perform at being college and career ready? Or um because we can't just look at that data and say we didn't like it because it's not accurate, we still have responsibility. And that's why we do look at more consistent tools to see.
Well, I just wanted to reemphasize that too, just because somebody tests are low in math, doesn't mean they can't go out there and get a job that's going to
Right.
Be much better than the kid that's got good
Right.
And and how to judge that, how to be able to go back ten years down the line and get data on the kids that graduated ten years ago.
Right.
That would be to me, I don't know how you know at eighteen age whether we have prepared them for career college.
Right.
Till we see, well, how many went to college and how many graduated from college and how many went out and got a job and how many are still, you know? There's so many other factors in that that just, to base it on some tests that they took when they were in eleventh grade.
Um, and then the the other uh area set that we take a look at is the students, the student graduation rate. So ninety seven percent of our Painesville students graduated. So when you have a class that's under a hundred, one or two students that that uh don't complete high school, is it makes a big difference in your population? So um we've had very consistent, um very solid graduation rates, which is something I think as a board you should be um pleased by. Um, but we uh, you know, we are very aware that um we have to um touch base with kids, make sure that they're on track. Um, having a look at, um, what are their interests, getting them engaged in things so that we can hopefully keep them from checking out and and especially some of our students that maybe maybe they 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 don't have any desire to do um a a college course, whether it be a two-year or a four-year program. Expanding our career tech opportunities, really tying into hands-on learning, giving them an opportunity to engage. That's how we, that's how, really how we help our students progress on whichever track they would like to be on. And that's what helps our graduation rates.
I look at that as the end of the day analysis. It's the end of the day, lots of stuff can go in in all their grades, we have all our analysis there. Trouble trying to figure it out because it shifted with the COVID. This is where the kids get a shot at like, uh with a high graduation rate like that.
Yep.
We've always been really, really held up to the top of that.
Um, so I mentioned the um the opportunity for our students that we, um from a diversification perspective, we we have, um, uh, we do not have a lot of staff that are um racially diverse. Uh, we are part of an achievements and integration program, so Melrose and Long Prairie Gray Eagle, um because we are um proximal to them and they are racially um diverse uh districts. We have the opportunity to partner and pair with them um as part of an achievement and and integration plan. We have the opportunity to partner and pair with them as part of an achievement and, and integration plan. And one of the things that, that we do is really try to provide opportunities for our students here within the Painesville School, because we have both middle school and high school students that have an opportunity to partner with, pair, just have different activities where they're getting to know and experience something different than what happens here at the Painesville Area Schools. And so there's a, there is a specific plan that is part of, that has goals and you'll see that there are, reduce the reading proficiency gap between free and reduced and non-free and reduced students. Again, part of, same language, that's part of those World's Best Workforce Plan. Increasing enrollment in preschool programming for families receiving free and reduced meal benefits. Student-centered activities between the collaborative. That's one of the things that I talked about, having some structured opportunities. And this is, this plan is, it's a three-year plan. We are in the final year, so then as you see on the bottom, new plan is in the works and will begin July of twenty twenty-three. Really, and, and we've talked a lot at the World's Best Workforce meetings and Bruce, I think you can attest to that. And I don't, I think it was Maggie who was maybe on that committee as well, but really taking a look at the plans that we have and that we're writing and making sure that they're livable plans. They're not, it's kind of like our strategic plan. You know, sometimes districts will go through all this work to have a strategic plan and they stick it up on the shelf and it just sits there. That's not been the work of the Painesville Area Schools. And we didn't want this plan to be that way either. We really wanted, as a committee, to be able to talk about, okay, now that we've got three years of data, how are we gonna incorporate it and what are we gonna do with it? Now that we're, have an opportunity to rewrite the achievements and integration plan, what are we gonna do with that? So I, I think that that's been some good work of our committee, really trying to make the goals be really applicable and, and functional to really drive some of the work that, that the district is doing. So that is the achievements and integration information that's part of the World's Best Workforce Plan. I know we've had some discussion along the way. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to entertain those. Otherwise, I'll turn it back to you, Thomas.
With that, we'll just look for a motion to approve twenty-one World's Best Workforce Report as presented. Most from Cheryl. Second from Bruce. Any further discussions, question? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Carrie. Combining polling places.
Okay, so this is a resolution that takes place if we need to run a, an election in an off-year. It combines all of our polling places. We did this, this has been done in years past. But this would set our combined polling place for the Painesville Area Center. You all did this when we ran the, wrote the election last November. It was a combined election, so this is just the resolution calling for a combined polling place.
Make that a motion.
And motion from Rick to adopt the resolution as presented.
A second.
A second from Cheryl. On that, we'll roll call vote.
Cheryl.
I.
Rick.
I.
Paul.
I.
Jake.
I.
First.
Good.
That the resolution is passed. First meeting in January.
Okay, so we've got a couple of things that are impacting our January meetings. First and foremost, January second is a federal holiday and that technically is the first Monday in January. The, I would suggest that the board maybe take a look at meeting the following Monday, which is January ninth, as a organizational meeting. In addition, the, there, the, the week of January ninth is also the Minnesota School Board Association meeting, conference on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. But with our new board members, we will have three, three new board, board members attending the Phase One and Phase Two training, which would be on Tuesday and Wednesday. So I, as we're talking about January meetings, and I know we will actually set the January meetings at the first meeting in January. But I would suggest that the board consider looking at January ninth as a organizational meeting and then holding the first, the work session in January right after it upon conclusion of that work, of that organizational meeting. So kind of a mouthful, lots to think about there.
Do that.
You okay with that?
Yep. I think it's a really good idea. We get it all done, combine the two meetings together. It always used to be done at a meeting.
Okay.
I mean, but that only started three, four years ago.
Okay.
So we, we always did the organizational at the first meeting, but I think it's imperative that we have it before the conference.
Okay. Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
I think so too.
Will we, okay with them shooting that January ninth meeting to be five o'clock start for the organizational meeting and then, and then following that up?
So let's talk about that briefly. It's too early for some of you.
Well, I think this one has to be the, the standard time. I think it should be the standard time.
Because then we'll set the meeting time
Okay.
after that. And the organizational meetings usually twenty minutes. I don't know, it's not that long a meeting usually, is it?
Doesn't take very long.
And so, I mean.
Everybody should get the stuff in advance. We know what the committees are in advance.
Yep.
And
All of that.
The only thing that'll be different is we'll have some new board members to walk through processes at that meeting. And then two, just as a reminder, typically, the, the work session in that first board meeting that is the, typically the second Tuesday of the month does not carry action. It's informational. So, so I would recommend having a sort of organizational meeting, conclude that, which is your action items, and then move based on a, a short little break, then move into your work session.
Let's do it. We need to do it just.
Okay. Sounds great.
Looking for a motion from, to schedule an organizational meeting on January ninth at five PM here in the boardroom. So move, motion from Bruce. Second, second from Rick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Carrie. And gee, school board member recognition.
All right, so as a superintendent, I received information from the Minnesota School Board Association that Thomas Pearson has completed Phase One, Two, Three, and Four of the Minnesota School Board Association training. So congratulations, Thomas. Thank you for that and the, the learning that has gone on with that. So thank you. In addition, I also received confirmation that Jake has received the Director's Award, which is a hundred hours of professional development through the Minnesota School Boards Association. So Jake, thank you. This is for you and we do appreciate. And on that note, I, I will also sadly say goodbye as we thank you for your time on the school board here. And you'll get to take your, your handy-dandy little name badge with you. But again, just a recognition and thank you for your service to the Painesville Area Schools, so.
Want to say that, just appreciate. We're gonna miss Jacobs. Legislative information and just a real key person as far as helping to understand everything that's going on in St. Paul and just being a connection with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, echo the same thing. Jake's been wonderful for about four years and getting to know you as, as a board member and and appreciate it, appreciate everything you've done so far and hopefully see you back on the board here soon.
There's some great heroes in here.
Wait a minute.
So thanks for being on the board. You've done a great job. Interesting watching everybody process everything and that's always fun with varying opinions.
It's always been fun hearing your opinions and talking to you after the board meetings.
Yeah, it's been fun. It's been a fun four years. It's been an interesting four years, but definitely something I really enjoyed, so thank you.
We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
That, review upcoming board meetings. So we, do we have that one set for January night? The organizational meeting at five o'clock here in the boardroom. And then we will have our regular work session meeting immediately following the organizational meeting or the close of the organizational meeting. So we'll go back, back to those two meetings on January ninth. Any other meetings or anything else you'd make think of? That will, look to close the meeting to a valid superintendent. Looking for a motion. I'll move, motion from Rick.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. With that, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Carrie. So close meeting at two thirty-nine PM. Yep, so looking for a motion to open meeting.
Someone.
Motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Rick. Meeting's officially reopened at three twenty-seven PM. Just stating a closed session. We closed the meeting in order to reevaluate superintendent, discuss future goals and, and and, and evaluate the performance she's carried with us for, since the last, last evaluation and, and, and find that she's meeting these expectations that we've, we've set for her and and, yep, had that opportunity to develop the goals for, for the next six months, so. With that, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Oh wait, six o'clock tonight.
Oh, thank you. The truth and taxation. I would like to just know what is the will of the board if the weather does indeed turn south? It is currently still raining.
Close.
Not gonna make any difference to me.
I'm close to it. And as long as we have at least four of us here, we have a quorum.
Okay.
So if.
So I will evaluate if.
You've got wind.
Yeah.
I don't have any wind issues. I can't imagine.
I know the country roads are really icy already.
Okay, so and our presenter can join us virtually.
Perfect.
So if we're, okay.
Do it.
Oh, back to, I think we still have the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Carrie, okay.
Okay.
That, that official, but yes. Yeah, I think we move forward to PM meeting. Cheryl, you make that determination based on what the weather conditions are like, how about you and, and what's happening at that point in time.
Thank you.
The rest of us in town, inch our way here and as needed and get that six o'clock meeting.
Okay.
Sounds good. Good call. Yep. With that, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move the board, you now adjourn.
And motion from Jake. Second from Cheryl. Any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Carrie.